Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives. So we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Today is Thursday, April 28th. It is 10 minutes after 9:00 a.m. This is a meeting of Legislative and Human Resources Committee. Appreciate all of you being here today. This is a reschedule from our earlier meeting that we canceled due to the power outage. So with that being said, we'll move through the agenda. First item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment this morning? Please step to the podium. Say your name and address for the record. And you have up to three minutes.
Address. I think I live downtown. 300 Monroe. Harold Voorhees, County Commissioner, 5380 Kennewah Avenue, City of Wyoming. And of course, you would probably expect this morning we had the question about the zoo and the museum on the agenda. And about, I think it's three, maybe going on four years ago, when then-chair Sandy Peristinsma and myself were put on a committee to look at moving the zoo out of a department position with the county into its own non-governmental entity. And therefore, kind of getting it to where it can go to the community, the philanthropic community, and our friends that enjoy the zoo as well. And from them, encourage donations to help the zoo grow. And it's, I think, better done as a non-governmental entity. And so we went through that transition, which took some time, wasn't real easy in many ways, but we got it accomplished and things are moving along very good. Brought in a great new director with Peter D'Arrenzio from Kansas City. We got a great master plan. But I think the fulfillment of what was that desire back when we moved it out of being a department and on its own was that it would have its own commitment of dollars, not that subject to the appropriation process where you can go to people who would be able to give several millions of dollars in a zoo project if they knew there was that longevity of stability there, of the financial stability of the zoo. And that's why through these months, we've been working on the process of saying, let's go directly to the people who we believe are the ones who should have that choice. It's not a mandated service of the county. And so we're independent of that. But let the people make that choice. And so I'm not out to right now garner support. I'm just out to garner the opportunity to let the people vote on the issue. And that's my call now. So as we moved along with the zoo, which is, I think, a very important cultural entity in our community for education, for preservation of animals, it's so much, it's not a place of just visiting. It's a place where very important work, along with other zoos throughout the nation and the world, work for the preservation of animals. And so that's very important. But another very important entity in our county, of course, is the zoo. And the city has kind of moved away from being its primary source. And so we are including together with the zoo and with the museum. And we're asking today that you would just say yes, we'll let the people decide. Let the people decide. Yes, we'll let the people make that choice of whether or not they want their dollars in this non-mandated entity. So I encourage a yes vote, and that was my purpose this morning. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Voorhees. Any other public comment this morning? Good morning, Peter and Dale.
Good morning. Thank you for having us today. And let's see, I guess I'm supposed to state my name and where I live.
Yep.
Peter D'Arrenzio. I live in Granville. And we're here today to talk about the proposed millage. And a lot of work has gone into this up to this point, searching what the citizens of Kent County are looking for. And we've done that through focus groups, through polls, and things like that. And we're excited and we're eager to put this before the citizens in the fall and let them have an opportunity to decide what they'd like to do with their community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Dale Robertson. I'm a resident of Cascade Township in Kent County. I work at the Grand Rapids Public Museum and would like to echo everything that Peter said, but also extend my appreciation and thanks to the county, this committee, the other committees administration for allowing us to work with you and to have this opportunity in front of you today. And we're, of course, we'll be here to answer any questions and help out with any information any way that you need as you go forward. So thank you for the opportunity today.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other public comment this morning? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Approval of the minutes from our April 12th meeting. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
So.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hennessy.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Corndyke. Questions or comments on the minutes? All right, seeing none, all of them favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, Administrator's Office Performance Measurements, five-minute update. And of course, that means Darrell. It's your time to shine, Darrell.
Good morning. I know you've had a long morning already, especially those who are in the executive committee. But I will be brief. It's a five-minute update. It's hard to identify and limit it to five minutes because when I talk about the Administrator's Office, we're really talking about the county and all the accomplishments that county has done, and our goals and objectives, and our strategic goals. But it can't be done by one person. It can't be done by one group. It's done by an entire group of people. Every one of the 1,600-plus employees participates in and contributes to the success of Kent County. Just a couple of things that I want to highlight in the five-minute update. First of all, we did revisit our strategic goals this year, and it's the first time in about eight or nine years that we revisited them with all the staff within the Administrator's Office. We made very little modification to a couple of the strategic goals. We did some tweaking of language. We added a couple of strategic goals that we hadn't had before. So when you look on the right side of the page, you will see six strategic goals. We had four before, but now we are tying more closely to the county's board's priorities. In terms of significant accomplishments, there are several things that I want to highlight. And I'll only highlight about a half a dozen of the 10 or so that are listed. One of the big things that we have done is we helped coordinate the transition of the airport from a department of the county to an authority. And this has taken a lot of work on the part of the Administrator's Office, Fiscal Services, Information Technology, and HR. But it's gone smoothly. And it's gone very smoothly. Anyone who has participated in the process, either from the county side, the airport side, the consultant side, has borne witness to that. Another significant accomplishment is that the county reached a three-year agreement with all local units except one as it relates to dispatch services. This is the first time this has happened, but even the one community that did not enter into an agreement is abiding by the provisions of the agreement. The county partnered with Mercy, St. Mary's, and Spectrum Health, along with the Area Agency on Aging, to support the county's guardianship program and secured money in order to keep that program going and effective. We negotiated a five-year agreement with Experienced Grand Rapids. That's not unusual. What is unusual is the fact that we did tie some performance benchmarks to that, which is, and incentive payments to that. That's the first time in an agreement with our Convention Visitors Bureau that we have done that. We have been trying to improve our ongoing communications with more social media work, more outreach to our media channels through the efforts of Lisa LaPlante and others. We have, we did some FOIA training, not only internally, but with the changes in the Freedom of Information Act law and the provisions therein, we invited other local units of government to participate. All of these goals and objectives are tied to things that the Board of Commissioners has listed in its vision. Terms of proactive and innovative government, stable revenues, strategic public-private, public-public, and public nonprofit partnerships, communication, providing accurate information, and protecting the county from liability. Now, I didn't note the AAA credit rating. It is a significant accomplishment, and Chair Soffel did mention that. But what it says about the county is more than just finances, as he noted. So that's my update. I wish I could, I can say more, but I won't. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Darrell. Any questions for Darrell this morning? Mr. Dallin.
Thank you, Chair. Morning, Darrell.
Morning.
One of the pieces of our mission statement that I tend to observe is the phrase about providing, delivering services for our diverse community. And I'm wondering if you have any sense, one of the pieces that is in here is about recruiting and getting folks for boards and committees. Do you have any sense for how we're doing on diversity in our citizen boards and our recruitment for that?
I don't probably, Pam and Marie would have a better idea since they coordinate that process. I tend to focus more on the employment recruitment efforts and outreach. I do know that the processes that have been used, we try to get the word out early and often so that we can attract as many interested parties as we can. And I don't know if I keep track of statistics related to the diversity element.
Not so much with the diversity part, but I do work with Darius Quinn in Human Resources, and he gives me a list of the various community agencies that we reach out to with the announcements of all the vacancies.
I guess what I'd like to just throw out there to think about is, you know, I know you just said you re-looked at your strategic goals, but I don't see anything in there addressing the diversity piece.
Sure.
And I think we all are recognizing that what we count and what we pay attention, what we count, we're going to pay attention to. I don't see anything in here either about recruitment numbers, or recruitment, or who's in place on those boards and committees.
For the, we can look at that for the boards and commissions. In terms of the employment information, that is usually.
It's an HR.
Part of the HR PMs. But this is a good point. And I know that Pam and Marie spent, if you dig into the detail of the information, there's a big difference in what we are measuring now than what we have in the past. They've done a lot of work to revise that, but we can certainly add.
I guess just one more thought, if I could. You know, in my old age, I'm recognizing more and more that we tend to use the same circles that we always use for getting information out, for recruiting. And if we don't know that we're not getting any change, why are we going to look at something different? So I think if we're counting that stuff and paying attention to it, we might find out that we've got to do some things differently.
Agreed.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Darrell this morning? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Darrell. Appreciate all your hard work and your report this morning. Next up on our agenda, item number four, I forgot to mention this earlier. This is a performance measurement review from Facilities Management. And given our shift in time, we are going to reschedule that for another date and time. This is typically the 30-minute review. So Al Jano is here this morning. I think he'd be ready if we were ready for him, but that's okay. Let's just go ahead and postpone that for another time when everybody has it. We're blocking their schedule for that update. So thanks, Al, for being here. Appreciate your work.
Thank you for having me.
Next up on the agenda, item number five for the Board of Commissioners, John Ball Zoo and Grand Rapids Public Museum Millage Request.
This is a request to recommend to the board to authorize the placement of a proposition on the November 8, 2016 general election ballot for a dedicated millage for John Ball Zoo and the Grand Rapids Public Museum. The zoo and museum have submitted a joint request for consideration of a .44 mil property tax levy, the proceeds of which would be split equally between the two entities and used by each organization to fund operations and capital projects. The proposed length of the levy is 10 years. The zoo and museum are both publicly owned institutions collectively serving more than 800,000 visitors each year. Millage funding, if approved, will provide financial support to allow both institutions to continue to serve Kent County residents through educational programs and to make necessary renovations to aging exhibits and to preserve key museum artifacts, establish new exhibits, upgrade technology, and increase public access. The proposed millage, if approved, will cost the owner of a home with a market value of $170,000, which translates into a taxable value of $85,000, which is our median home income value, or home value in Kent County, $37.40 per year. The request was reviewed by administrative staff to ensure compliance with the board's millage policy and state statute. The request was also reviewed and recommended to be placed on the November general election ballot by the Millage Subcommittee, which consists of Commissioners Dan Corndyke, Emily Breavy, Carol Hennessy, Ted Vonck, and Harold Voorhees. The item also was recommended for approval by the Finance and Physical Resources Committee at its April 19 meeting.
Okay, do we have a motion? Do we have a motion by Commissioner Hennessy? Is there support?
No, supported.
Support by Commissioner Vonck? Questions or comments on the motion? Mr. Antor.
Just a comment. I will not be supporting this to be put on the ballot for a couple of different reasons. I know, and first of all, thank you to the presenters, and I understand your passion for this. We talked about taxpayers, let the taxpayers decide, but when you're talking about millage increase, you're talking about a lot of people voting on something that they don't, may not pay any type of property taxes. So what we should be talking about, what are the property owners think about this millage increase and not just people that live here? Just this week, CNN and CBS were reporting that one out of five families in this country currently do not have anybody in their household working. Another part of that report said 41% of eligible Americans are not working at this point in time, which flies in the face of the current unemployment statistics, which apparently someplace in the book somewhere along the lines. But I'd be a lot more inclined to vote yes if property owners would be the ones being asked this question about this. And also on the way in here, I don't know how many folks were listening to WOOD Radio, but the GAO Government Accounting Office just announced that healthcare premiums are going to be doubling in this country for healthcare. And all these additional costs have a huge impact. And it just doesn't seem like right now is a good time to be asking for more money on the backs of a few taxpayers for a non-critical service. I love the zoo and I love the museums, don't get me wrong. It's really cool. It's nice to have in the community. But the timing is just off. There's a lot coming down the pike right now, and I think to be asking for more money is inappropriate. I wasn't going to support the millages anyhow, and to support the thought of putting it on the ballot, I'm having a rough time differentiating between the two. I don't want people to think I support the millages by doing so. But yeah, with all due respect to our presenters and what they're trying to do, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Commissioner Vonck.
Thank you, Chair. I just have one comment on the second bullet point, which says increased public access. And I would like it to include handicap access as well. A while back, I was at the zoo, and I was picked up with a golf cart or whatever and taken up to wherever they were holding the event that day. But some time ago, I was at Metro Hospital and I had to visit an injured friend, and I was wondering how I was going to get there because past 100 yards or 50 yards unlimited. I got there and I was happily surprised that they had electric golf carts, or electric carts, gave me a driver's license, and you were allowed use of that. And if you ever tried to push an adult person through, the zoo especially, and even the museum, it's quite a job. And it can be made easier if those were available, and maybe you could talk to Metro and see what their policy is. But whether this is passed or not, I would like to see that included, and I'd like to have you think about that in Western Michigan for those that have disabilities. And it's not always older people, it's a lot of young people too that have suffered sports injuries and so forth. So I just add that as a comment to, for you to think about, and maybe we can make both facilities more accessible in different ways. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. First, a question. My understanding is that if we support this, it is not necessarily saying we support the underlying millage. So I guess I'm looking for maybe a little comment from Darrell as to what's the standard that we apply here in determining whether we send this to the voters or not? Is it, do we like the idea? Do we not like the idea? Is a little more specific than that?
What we look at is certain compliance issues to state law and the policy that the county board has established. It's really a matter of, there is no standard other than your own conscience and vote. It's based on my experience, you know? It depends on, it does not translate, although sometimes it may be interpreted as translating into support for a millage or a ballot question. But having the board, there's, the only way you can get a question on the ballot is through the Board of Commissioners, a countywide question, is through the Board of Commissioners. Some commissioners have said, I don't support the millage, but I support the ability of the people to vote. So I'm going to place it on the millage. Some people support the concept of a millage and believe in the purpose of the millage and support it in that way. Some people oppose it. I've seen it everywhere, but we don't have a set legal standard in terms of how you individually vote.
So is it the millage committee's analysis and recommendation, that's where you look at? Is it compliant with the policy of the county? Does it comply with the state law?
Has there been enough justification from those who are advocating the millage to convince the Millage Subcommittee to move it forward? Was the argument convincing enough? Is the need there to the extent that we think it, we, the Millage Subcommittee thinks it should be there? I mean, you've got several members of the Millage Subcommittee here who can.
So, but that's not just a technical review either, then? They're coming at it with the same spectrum of issues or concerns or support that we're looking at.
Exactly. And the Millage Subcommittee helps those advocates vet out some questions like, well, you know, you're not clear enough here. What do you mean? You know, please give us more information. It wasn't the zoo and the museum coming in, here's our presentation, thank you very much for your support. It was questions, hard questions being asked by the Millage Subcommittee to get to a recommendation for this committee and the board.
And Commissioner Corndyke is the chair of the Millage Subcommittee, and he wanted to speak on that issue as well.
Sure. So to answer your question, Commissioner Steck, we are confirming the process that we require organizations to go through to get a millage to this point that they have right now, to ask us to put it on the ballot. They have no other way to get a millage request on the ballot other than coming through this board. So we set up that Subcommittee. Four of the members are sitting here in this room right now and will be voting on this. We met with them, I don't know how many times, vetted a lot of information, got a lot of specifics, made some changes and tweaks and those types of things. And just to confirm, as Commissioner Antor said, he doesn't support the millage, so he doesn't support putting it on the millage. I think those are two separate issues, okay? We're not, we're not asked, no one's being asked to support the millage here today, okay? I'm sure the advocates want you to. But other than that, if you vote yes, you're not saying I support the millage. You're saying I support the process that the county went through, through the Millage Subcommittee, to put this before the voters and allow them to decide. I mean, that's, I think that's one of my jobs is to, we're in a republic, but it's a republic of democracy. So we're the representatives that have the opportunity to allow the democracy to work. Yes, we want this millage, and it'll pass. Or no, we don't want the millage, we don't want these changes, they don't go down in flames. I was here in 2002 or '03 when we talked about moving the zoo out to where Myers Gardens is, and we had the same argument, but we ultimately decided, let's let the voters decide. And it went down big. But it was their decision to do that. All we did was give them the opportunity to weigh in and say yes or no, we want a millage to move the zoo. And they said, heck no, we don't want that millage to move the zoo. And it went down, okay? So that's all we're doing here. We're giving the citizens of this county an opportunity to say, yes, we want to pay another millage to support the zoo and the museum for the next 10 years. We're not saying we support it. I haven't decided what I'm going to do yet personally. I'm always a no until I can be sold to a yes. But I'm saying this is something that we should allow the voters to decide, pure and simple. They went through our process, we confirmed everything that they said was true and accurate, and this is what they're going to propose, and they need to sell it, and they need to get the millage passed. That's not our job. Our job is simply to put it on the ballot and let the voters decide. They can't do it by petition. They have no other way to have this opportunity. So with that being said, I certainly support letting the people decide if this is something that's good for the county into the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Corndyke. Commissioner Hennessy.
Well, the county administration will really look at the details on how, you know, how to make the proposal, how to board it and that type of thing. I would say our Millage Subcommittee, as Commissioner Corndyke was saying, was really looked at, what is the plan? Is this a reasonable request? Is this worthwhile? Is there enough thought into this? Is there enough planning into this? Are the needs for the money stated? Are they transparent? And the Millage Subcommittee really had the zoo and the public museum make the case and to present the evidence. A lot of it is, you know, presented in the packet that we have in front of us. It's a very, you know, the finances are laid out, the need is laid out, the uses of the money is laid out. It, you know, so it certainly met the Millage Subcommittee's criteria for what is the plan? And, you know, is it reasonable to put it on the ballot and to let the people decide? We're so closely involved with the zoo that we can, you know, we, less so with the public museum, but with the zoo, we can see. museum, but with the zoo, we can see how this has progressed over the last few years. We can look at what are, you know, how we have reorganized the structure, the structural changes that have been made, how we have given voice to the nonprofit board, how we have done our own, you know, the whole management and structure. And the zoo board, which Commissioner Voorhees and I are appointed to by this commission, is looking very closely at how it operates. We spent many, many months to develop a strategic plan that was brought here and adopted by this board, because we control the use of the land, and it does, all new plans are taking into consideration ADA compliance. And the hilly terrain will always be a problem, that is a concern, and that is, that was noted in there. So, we've, you know, we have committees meeting now, are meeting today on board functionality. We're continuing to look at how this board will operate. We're continuing to refine and make, you know, make everything transparent, make everything clear, to operate responsibly. You know, I'm very supportive of putting this on the ballot, because I'm really convinced that there is a plan behind the request.
Okay. Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. Kind of along similar lines to what others have said, I'm incredibly impressed with the thoughtfulness, the hard work, the, how well thought out the proposals for use of these millage funds are by these organizations, and to me, that's the reason. And a lot of credit to the committee as well, in working to end up with the kind of proposals that we see. But that's the reason that I would support this going on the ballot. And then, despite my enthusiastic support for them, let the voters decide. I also want to weigh in on the idea that just property owners should be the ones that decide about this. And I, what I've recognized over the years is that, you know, pretty much everybody in this county, I work with the Coalition on Homelessness, and there's maybe 1,000 people that don't pay rent or own a home. And generally, when you pay rent, part of your rent is going toward that property owner's property taxes. So, when property taxes go up, it tends to affect the amount of rent that you pay. In fact, the state of Michigan recognizes that, or has recognized it, in allowing low-income renters to get a portion of the property taxes that their landlord paid, rebated to them. So, I think the idea that somehow not everybody is affected by the property taxes that are collected here for these purposes, it doesn't, doesn't make sense to me, because I think anybody that's paying rent or owns property should have a right to vote, because it will affect all of us, not just property owners. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else choosing to speak on this for the first time?
Go.
Commissioner Bolton.
Thank you. This is a really, really tough issue for me. I have two young boys, we love, love, love the museum and the zoo. I love both organizations. They are thriving organizations, you have increased attendance, in some cases, an endowment, strong philanthropic support, all great things, good organizations. But I do have concerns about those who do own property and those who are not financially stable, low-income people who still own their homes. I don't feel it's necessarily fair to ask every single person in the county to support this type of effort. It is not a core service of government. It is an awesome thing to have in the community, but I don't know that our property taxes should, they should be dependent upon our property taxes. I also have concerns that it is a 10-year millage. I feel that's kind of a long time. You know, I recently delivered Meals on Wheels for low-income seniors, and these are people who are just hanging on financially to stay in their own homes, and we keep adding, you know, costs, and I just think this is just another kind of layer, unfortunately. I understand this vote is just to put it on the ballot, but I also do feel that people elect me to make these decisions for them as well. And I do want my colleagues to know that I support the work, I, this vote is not in any way diminishing the work that you put into the millage Subcommittee. I just respectfully disagree. So, that will be my no-vote explanation. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Steck.
Thank you, Chair. I actually had a couple of extra, but thank you for the explanation, Commissioner Kornike. Is there someone from the museum that can respond to? My understanding is that the museum has a City of Grand Rapids Board that advises the museum activities. There is a foundation board, and then there is an operating board. So, there's three separate entities. And that some of the conversation going into the proposal here is that if the county taxpayers approve this millage and end up supporting, looks like it'd be a little more than half of the operating budget, that there would be one board position made available to the county. And I just wanted to hear a little bit why the board position that's suggested would be on the operating board and not the foundation board, which is, at least in the memo here, the strategic board.
Dale Robertson stays. He's up to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Dale Robertson, again, from the Grand Rapids Public Museum. So, if I could just maybe sketch out a little bit of the history to maybe try to build to some context. So, the Grand Rapids Public Museum originally part of GRPS. In 1903, became affiliated with the city, and the city charter of, and I have a mental block, it's either 1913 or 1916, one of the two. Then put into place in the city charter, the Board of Art Museum Commission, that then oversaw which led the museum, which was then a city department. When the agreement was made back in 2006, that the foundation would become responsible for the operations of the museum, and a lease, a 99-year lease with an option to for 50, was executed between the two organizations. The Board of Art Museum Commission, required by the charter, stated in existence, and they have that responsibility then to oversee the museum's compliance with that 99-year lease, and because the city maintains title to all the buildings, all the lands, and all the collections, to make sure that we are properly fulfilling our obligations on the lease. So, that correct, that stays into effect. Then the museum reformed, then made some structures, so the foundation, the trustee board is the parent. Its primary responsibilities, yes, are setting broad strategic plans, maintaining and protecting the endowment, ambassadors, and fundraising. Then we have, they have then the wholly-owned subsidiary, which is actually the museum, okay, that has its own Board of Directors, that actually recommends the strategic plan up to the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees appropriates dollars from donations and the endowment to the Board of Directors. So, the actual work and the strategic plan is really done by the Board of Directors. Under this proposal, should the millage, should it be put on the ballot and should the millage pass, the public dollars would go directly to the museum subsidiary, which is actually the museum, where the operations are actually carried out. So, our thought was, in working with the administration, is that a commissioned board seat on that entity that is directly receiving the dollars, and will be directly have the direct oversight and influence of how they're being spent, what they're being used for, would be the position that would provide most oversight and be able to be the best conduit back to the Board of Commissions of exactly what's going on, how those dollars are being used, and are we protecting the assets and fulfilling our promise that was made to the vote, to the voters.
But the, isn't then the foundation board is the strategic policy decision-maker? I understand the operating board makes recommendations with respect to how to spend the millage money, but ultimately, the foundation board is the determiner of yes or no specifically.
So, may I? So, the, correct. I mean, the strategic plan for the organization ultimately is approved by the foundation Board of Trustees. It's recommended through the Board of Directors, and also within consultation and with the Strategic Planning Committee of the board. We're happy to make any change that you, that the group desires. Our thought, though, was that being on the operational board, is that because that's the entity that's going to receive the tax dollars, it will not be appropriated from the trustees, like other donations, the opportunity for scrutiny and input would be better there. But we're happy to, we're happy to place a commissioner, whichever, you know, on whichever board makes the most sense.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to be sensitive to, if in fact it's approved and half of the operations are funded by essentially county-approved voter millage, the oversight, the fiduciary responsibility to oversight that the county board may exercise should be placed where it can be most controlling and effective. And I understand you need to get into the details about how these two boards function back and forth to really know that, and I trust your judgment about that, but I certainly would encourage that if it hasn't been, that we fully explore where's the best place to allow the county to have that responsibility to fulfill its oversight duties. And whether it's one, or whether it's on both of them.
Could be on both.
Is this, is this an obligation, or is this a commitment to explore the appointment if it's approved?
Please.
It is a commit, I'm, so here, speaking today on public record and in consultation with the chairs of both of our, both of those boards, I can state publicly here on the record that we have a commitment, that we will have commission representation and the museum governing bodies. And if it needs to be on both boards, we'll make that happen on both boards.
You're willing to explore that.
Well, absolutely right, and we'll commit to fulfill that obligation.
Okay. Well, and then my last comment, I guess, is thank you again for the comments, and I understand that if we approve and it goes to the full commission for approval, it is not necessarily a statement that we would ultimately support the millage, because I personally would want to spend more time reviewing and exploring. I've expressed to some, I have some concerns about the supplementation of how the millage money is used, but to the extent that this is a proposal that has been fully vetted, I will probably support it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you. I'll keep it brief. Just in regard to the rent versus homeowners, I think there is a difference, and I know Commissioner Talon had indicated a lot of times the rent will go up for people as a result of millage increases, and we all know that's true. And, but, you know, higher rent is not necessarily good for the community, it's a negative. And, you know, in the 30-some-odd years I've been paying property taxes, I've never been offered a rebate, and I suspect I never will as a property tax, or as a property owner. So, there is a difference. There's a lot of people that don't pay any type of rent even, that are old enough to vote. A lot of people voting on this issue that have no skin in the game. And so, for that reason, again, I'm just going to say that I don't think it should be on the ballot. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I will weigh in. I appreciate the robust conversation that we've had this morning. There was also conversation that was had at the finance meeting, I think a lot of issues were brought up, and it's a very good conversation to be had. I want to thank Commissioner Kornike, Commissioner Vonck, and Commissioner Hennessy for serving on the millage Subcommittee. I served on it several years ago. I know it's a tough one, because you do have to find that balance between I support the public access to it, but do I personally support it, and kind of weighing that out in your own mind can be a tricky one to do. I think you've done an excellent job of doing that. If you go through and look at these documents, these date back to earlier this year. I know you guys have been working on it since last year. I came out to the zoo several months ago, back in the fall, when you were still working through a lot of this stuff. So, the due diligence is clearly there, it's been documented. To me, and we've already talked, and I don't know that I can say any more eloquently than Commissioner Kornike did this morning, but this is really about the process, and we have a process, and they have followed it, and it's very clearly stated here. Appreciate the conversation, but from my perspective, and I think I'm echoing a lot of the comments that have been said, that it's time to put this to the people and let them have a say and weigh in. So, I'm happy to support this, and we'll go ahead and call this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, sign?
Aye.
No.
Okay. Motion carries. Item number six on our agenda this morning is miscellaneous. Do we have any commissioner miscellaneous this morning? Commissioner Antor.
I got to say one more thing. No, I really do appreciate all the work, because I know I've been on those committees before when you got tough issues, and it's just, you know, party is thinking, you know, the fiscally part of your body is thinking, you know, this may not be a good idea, but you know it's good for the area and for the county to have a fully functioning zoo and museum. It's good stuff, it really is. Sometimes timing isn't really good, and so I just wanted to, again, add that I appreciate all the work, and I understand, you know, we're heartless on this.
All right. Any other commissioner miscellaneous this morning? Okay, seeing none, we'll call this meeting adjourned.
I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
I'm Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Oh, yeah.